I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic, a free and secure nation, and we are proud and grateful for its independence and justice as well.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilman Costa.
Uh, work commitment?
Councilman Tomato.
Here.
Delirpa.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Sonnemeyer.
Here.
Yasi.
Also with us are Clerk Brianna Calabro and Borough Attorney Fred Semrau. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on December 23rd, 2018. Copies provided to local news media posted here at Borough Hall. There was to be a presentation, but then Tony got stuck at work, so we wanted to honor Tony for his six years on the governing body, so we hope to do that at our second January meeting, not at Reorg. We'll do it at the technical. So hopefully he'll be available. We'll get him here eventually. There's no early executive session. There are two non-agenda items. They're simply accepting resignations from a Ken Fioretti from the Planning Board and a Mary Westcott from the REC Commission. And the reason we're doing it so late in the year is these are unexpired terms, so like each one has say two years left in their term. And we want to do it now because it helps agree with the financial disclosures, so as opposed to reappointing, not reappointing, a reorg because it's not the end of their term. So it just makes life easier. So that's why we are doing this. Effective 12/31 for these two. That's the non-agenda item. We do have openings on REC and Planning Board. We will email the governing body, but we're going to put it on social media, the website. Residents want to step up. I've gotten some feedback for REC and Municipal Alliance so far, so we have some seats to be filled. I need a motion now for early public comment.
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item? Seeing no one, motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports, do we have anything? Let's start with brief.
They don't have any.
Fred.
No, I don't think they are thinking.
Okay. Governing body members. Anyone?
No.
The only thing I have, and I may have touched upon it last meeting, but I want to repeat it, that we successfully are receiving $510,000 for Andrews, which is a big power utility slash gaming project. There's been a lot of issues over there. So that's a DOT grant we are successfully obtaining. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, happy holiday, happy Hanukkah, whatever may apply. Especially want to thank, first, each member of the governing body for your commitment to the borough and the work and the hours you put in. Each of you have your own specialty and expertise when it comes to the governing body, and it is just an incredible asset to the borough. I want to thank Fred and your staff for another year of phenomenal service, keeping us protected and out of troubles.
Thank you.
But seriously, you and Dawn and Susan and your entire staff is just very responsive to our needs and wonderful, wonderful people.
It's an honor to work for the borough and the body it works for, so thank you.
Thank you.
For always keeping me on my toes.
Yeah, true. I also want to... Just a professional beyond professional. I know Fred's nodding his head here. You're just really, really good at what you do. And they guard my life and the rest of our lives real easy because you're really good at what you do. I also want to thank our volunteers throughout town, all our commissioners and, you know, those who serve, especially our volunteer fire department, ladies auxiliary, and all of our staff outside Borough Hall. And Drew, congratulations again. We really look forward to working with you. I'm meeting tomorrow with Brianna and Drew, just to bring them up to speed and, you know, show them what's going on in the borough. And Bill Graff, as always, thanks for helping, used to ordinance review and really helping fix a lot that goes on in the borough. And Linda, I gotta say thank you to Linda, just because, one, you're here, and, two, always keep me on my toes, so again, and it'll continue. I'm looking forward to it. I do, I do look forward to it. And your house looks lovely. But seriously, Merry Christmas to everybody, and we will continue and move along here. First item, pending business. I'm sorry, Consent Agenda Resolution 2019 12.1 through 12.3. Who makes that motion? As you'll see here, we did have a resignation for part-time shelter staff, so we'll be bringing, hopefully, in the early part of the new year replacement, just to continue helping out at the shelter. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose? That motion carries. Thank you. Pending items. Second to final reading, public hearing, Ordinance 33-2019 authorizing the acquisition by way of a donation of real property known as Block 5501, Lot 1401. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that if you write back to me.
And who makes that motion?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Flimmendale, County of St. Saig, State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition by way of donation of the real property known as Block 5501, Block 14.01, on the official tax map of the Borough of Flimmendale.
Thank you. Any motion to open public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? I'm sorry, that's not turning around.
There's a couple things in this ordinance that are conflicted with ordinance by 2017. First of all, in the fifth paragraph, you're saying that that is going to be assistance as it relates to site, I'm grateful that one of 20,000, which you have listed, three of the four stone screenings and dent screening, but 22,000 and six, which you have, five 2017, you're supposed to, the landowner is supposed to...
Do the site work.
The federal adopt ordinance, page 1, overlay zone, 2016, community of 40 acres to be acquired, so long as the landowner, first takes necessary steps to drive excavation elevation on this fourth housing section of the property.
Correct. I know exactly what you're, what you're getting at here. First of all, this ordinance is simply to get on the books the conveyance of the land so we can get that part going. There will be a separate contract between the borough and Finbar on the land donation that will list the requirements laid out in the AH ordinance, certain things they have to do, you know, to whether, whatever, whatever they have to do to get to the point of enabling affordable housing to then enable the extension of their quarry. So that'll all come, because it will be coming from, I don't have a tune here, there'll be a separate contract. So in this one, this is just stating, because we're still in negotiations with them and a developer, so you really can't get into too much, but like the stone, there's donations of stones, there's the whole road construction, there's so many other variables, but to your point, to enable, to enact the 17 ordinance and the AH overlay, certain things have to be done, and that'll be part of the contract. It has nothing to do with the conveyance of the land, because it's not completed.
We wanted to get the ordinance done this year.
Well, you know, I think there's an obligation to keep moving this process along. We, as a borough, have an obligation to try to promote the affordable housing. So this is, this step is the longer step to have the ordinance for introduction, the public hearing, and have that authorization. Because the ordinance comes before the resolution. You have to have the authorization to enter into a contract. So if this is defeated, there's no contract. If this is approved, then what will follow is a contract to sale.
I guess I also have a problem with the paragraph where it states that Finbar is proposed by the Borough of Flimmendale, donation of 40,000, no force to the borough, so that it supports development, 40,000, by dramatic purposes, global land acquisition and development costs, since the borough may sell a lot of the land with this such reduced activity costs. Finbar, equally upon the transfer of title to the borough, will qualify the incentivized zone by the beginning of 40,000, by having donated the land to the borough. And that's not the case in the other ordinance. They have to first excavate the clearing. And if this were, if you say they could take, they could create an quarry property, this would be...
No, I think like the mayor said, there's going to be another step to this. This is just, this is part of the contribution by Finbar. The other half is, that'll be addressed in the contract, whether it be a contract for the donation of this land or for the sale of the land. Somewhere, it'll have to speak for the site, the actual site preparation and requirements of the AH zone. But what we're saying here is, this is a step in the right direction, because Finbar's going to donate this land, and the most significant cost, even greater than site preparation, is the land cost itself. So by donating it, it's going to dramatically reduce the cost of the land and should really help the borough have an opportunity to develop the land for affordable housing. It's taking a big cost out of the way. To your point is, there will be contracts that address the site preparation. This is just for the acquisition of the land.
But again, we're still in, we wanted to get the ordinance for the conveyance of the donation of land, but we're, and I gotta be careful, because we're still in negotiation with Finbar on site work, questions, defining, who, what, where, because we have to get a developer to buy into what they want to do or vice versa, so there's a lot of moving parts yet to go here. Furthermore, excuse me, Finbar Telcon still has to go to the Planning Board, you know, for their site application once the subdivision's done and all that stuff.
The problem is that this paragraph states that they are going to do, they've done, they have to do the page for 40,000 to be able to use the property to acquire, and that's not supposed to be...
They cannot, they cannot begin doing any expansion or quarry.
You have to say that.
Again. Do you have any idea what it is?
Yeah, I think what it's doing is, it's saying that this is part of Finbar needing the incentivized zone. It gets a wear as, and just like when you have ordinances that you set salary ranges, you ultimately strike a salary with a resolution. This is an ordinance to say, as the mayor said, in order to take the step and get the subdivision moving and getting someone out there that says we're interested in actually developing the property, you have to have the ordinance to say, we have the authorization to accept the donation subsequent, subject to all those other things happening.
But you're not saying...
Well, you can't, because we can't tie this acquisition.
But you're, you're right to use this property without the...
No, they have no, they cannot do an expansion or quarry until two things happen. One, Planning Board, they gotta go for a site plan approval. That's, that's the second step. The first one is, as the AH ordinance says, they have to comply to enable affordable housing, build the haul road, get the site approval.
But if they don't own the property anymore, they, that's what you're saying here, they don't own the property anymore, therefore they, they're given the property...
No, 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 no. You're reading through it, because we all know, they cannot do any expansion or quarry until they enable the affordable housing. That's the biggest thing. They can't do anything until they enable the housing. And the enabling of the housing was through the donation of the land, step one, site work preparation, haul road, there were so many other variables that, that are yet to come before they can even go to the Planning Board to try to do any quarries.
And mayor, if I may, those are wear as, and as you know, for therefore be resolved, that's the actual authorization. And it says, "The boroughs authorized to acquire by donation the mere track, subject to a land donation agreement, so long as it's at no cost to the borough." So there's, this is, nothing happens until there's a land donation agreement. That'll be a separate action. Borough's not at that point yet. It has to demonstrate, it has the authority to move forward though, by ordinance to acquire the land. There's going to be an agreement that'll set forth whatever it turns to satisfy the ordinance and to promote the development of the track.
Okay, when you're saying so, then why that when you're saying, "If further resolved, donation of the land to the borough, development of 40,000, will provide significant reduction in cost, the launch cost of development of the site, will be 40,000, financially more suitable, the development of 40,000, and the donation of the land, in effect, will satisfy the AH1 overlay zone."
Right.
Site preparation obligation and qualify the donor for the quarry of AH1 overlay zone for a certain course of the measure.
It's the donation of the land, subject to an agreement, and this is one of the aspects that the court, I think this property was purchased for $9 million ultimately, and it's being donated to the borough, so it dramatically reduces the cost.
You're ignoring what I'm trying to say.
No, I'm saying too, that's one of the aspects. And, and, you know, it may very well be the most compelling reason to ultimately satisfy the AH1 overlay zone, but there's going to be others, as the mayor said.
That was the reason why this, our, our ordinance was set up, was in why, well, this was done originally, is because they were going to prepare this property, so it wasn't going to be cost prohibitive anymore. And now you're taking away that portion by being a wear as.
There's, there's no decision yet, but there, this is, this is part of the donation of the land at no cost. Nowhere did we say in, that this would be in the ordinance, that they had to donate land at no cost. That's significant to this borough.
There's what?
You don't want to be wrong. That was a legal one.
What, yeah, but this is separate and apart. There's no consideration or anything. This is a sep, we already been to court, where the court said the transaction was legal, and there was no promises. The borough would have had to pay for this track otherwise, right? If they already purchased it for $9 million? And what we're saying here is, the borough's getting it at no cost. Second is, there's going to be an agreement, to the point the mayor said, that addresses more about the AH1. I understand what you're saying. It should be more than just getting a multi-million dollar piece of property at no cost. That's what you're saying. And I'm saying there probably will be more items to address the site preparation, because the borough doesn't want to get that property sold without the site preparation addressed.
And again, when the reason we're kind of hesitating is we're still negotiating.
Yeah.
Okay, with two parties, Telcon and a developer, as far as all this, so that, this is just conveyance of the piece. I assure you, to your point, the AH requirements, site prep, all have to be addressed, dealt with.
Why you get involved with this tape, and when that comes down, and I'm going to play that tape, it better be what you're saying, because I don't think it's something that's, that's good place for this street, that it's for their hand, for the...
It's for the conveyance of the land. So again, when we, when we go down the road, you'll be here and we'll, we'll walk you through the whole process.
I don't have to do something.
You'll have who?
I mean, for somebody to say.
Please.
Please.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? 233, 19. Motion to close public hearing.
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who moves to adopt?
Someone.
Second.
Any special?
I just want to confer with you one second. So...
Right. What Fred suggests to Linda's concern. Can I have your copy?
Yeah.
Is that on the, be it further resolved, last paragraph, where it says that the donation of the land to the borough for the development of affordable housing will provide significant reduction in the once cost prohibitive development for the site, so that the affordable housing track will be more financially suitable for development of affordable housing. And the donation of land, which currently says, in effect, will satisfy, and we'll change that to, is, and the donation of land and all required provisions of the AH1 overlay zone, right, will conclude and satisfy the AH1 overlay zone. Is it kind of redundant?
Yeah, unless you just, I think it's just...
It is just site prep, right? Okay. So we'll say, and the donation of land...
Along with site...
Along with site preparation will, in effect, will satisfy under the AH1 overlay zone. Okay, so that's, we're going to make that change, and I'd ask whoever moved it, if you, if you, should we withdraw?
Just to amend.
To amend your motion to reflect the site prep language.
I'll amend my question.
Okay. And who was my second? Rich, you'll amend. Any further discussion?
It doesn't change the spirit of the ordinance, and it doesn't change what the next step is of the borough.
Okay. Thanks. And I understand your concern. Roll call.
Tomato.
Yes.
Delirpa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sonnemeyer.
Yep.
Yasi.
Yes. Thank you. New business. First item is, and there was no action tonight, it's just a quick discussion, because in the new year, I want Drew to be part of this discussion too. We have our March 13th deadline for our 2020 St. County Open Space Grant. As you know, we already, we have two still on the table. We still have to do Boge Basketball Court, that was 2018 funding, and, because the laser just got a little prolonged to this year. And we have the tennis courts, which was 2019 funding, to be done in 20. This will be 20's app, to be done in 21. So, you know, I put an email out, you know, I always give requests for dog park, it's a great one, but my always, my issue's always where? I mean, I just can't think of a place for a dog park that works. You know, Boge Pond where the trees are, but you want to mix children and dog park together? Probably not. So that's one. I was also thinking in full, even though we got a grant to do brick repointing, cleaning of the laser, we never did a full $30,000 ceiling system. It was sealed, but not to the big buck kind, so, you know, full power wash, seal that, you know, because if you notice, there's literally black streaks on it from just weather.
How much do we usually get?
I usually get $100, actually $99,000, because if you get $100, and it's a public hearing. Excuse me?
Does that go towards a new build?
It can go towards anything.
Rec Center?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's...
I mean, yeah, but this is going to give you one-fifth of what a rec center would cost, but the conversations we are going to have, right? But I want to have the resolution of the project done by, I would hope, no later, no later in the first meeting in February, so that would prepare the application for the March deadline. All right? So Drew, you too, where you're being kept on under some things maybe we're not thinking about for REC.
Same party, you want to talk?
Yes. Yep. Yes, exact. All right? So there's some ideas, John floats, just, you know, they like, they don't like when you hold the money, so if you got, if you got $100, you can't, like get $100 next year, $100, and wait three, four years till you have enough to do something.
I just, in the back of my head, do you have that deposit money that we're spending on Rink? Okay?
But, but you have to, if you, if you move the rec center to, let's say, Boston Street, then you have to do something with sewage water, so that's the cost too. So again, all discussions to be had, right? But, you know, we've done a lot, so it's not that we'll, we'll never find something to do, but I think the laser and the dog park is just some, first thing that comes to mind lines up. You guys think about some stuff too, right? And then the second item was same, similar discussion, but every year we get community development block grants. That's, you always hear CB, CDBG, CDBG, community development block, but only specific area, which I emailed everybody, is entitled to that funding, and it's pretty much our major corridor. And that's what funded the looping project to be done on Second Street. That's what's funded Sewer, Sewer Water on Henyon. That's what did some Leary, because that's the lower portion of Leary and Reeve, et cetera. We applied, I didn't get notice yet, in 19 for 20, although we have an email that says we're going to get, I just get the final award, for sidewalks to do from Main to Oak Street, Union Ave. It was a really shot, so we're just going to get a grant for that. So here, again, I put an email out for, making caps on, I emailed it to Frankie, our sewer and water foreman, to see if there's any utility projects he thinks should be looked at along this corridor, like the looping one, for example. So I'm waiting to hear back there. Same thing, into January, February, I want to have something in the plan. You know, one thing we could do, I was going to say extend the sidewalks, but now we're out of the mapping area on Union. I'd love to keep doing sidewalks on Union, but this wouldn't be eligible. You guys saw the map I sent you, right? It showed the area of funding availability, so look at that between now and our second meeting in January, okay? It's a little more restricted on what we can apply for. Moving along, item C, I need a motion for resolution 2019 12.4, payment of the bills. Who makes that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Delirpa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes, with the exception of P.O. 1901, 504.
Sonnemeyer.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes.
Tomato.
Just want to go to second. Shouldn't have fallen off. Okay, it's, um, pages are 12, 12, 1901, 463, 1 through 6, 12, 11, 1901, 463, 501, and 12, 12, 1901, 463, 1 through 6, and 12, 11, 1902, 116, 1 and 2.
Are you good? Yes? Okay. Item D, I need motion resolution 1912.5, award contract to GADA for our solid waste disposal. Who makes that motion?
Someone.
Discussion, just so everyone knows, our contract, we bid with Pompton Lakes. We also bid with Hawthorne Cooperative. The rate is $77 per ton. Our prior rate was 73 a ton, so it is a $12,000 annual increase, but we had rates up to $84 a ton, so it is the low bid here for our solid waste. And just to put it in perspective, Morris County averages, because they have to go to their county disposal area, it's over $100, $110 a ton, so we're still doing well. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sonnemeyer?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delirpa?
Yes. Item E, I need a motion for 219126, transfers. Who makes that motion, please?
Someone.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Sonnemeyer?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delirpa?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
And final new business item of 2000, oh no, I'm sorry, we have non-agenda. We got excited there from there. Item F, need a motion for 19127, amending resolution number 19184, DMC Land Survey Contract. Who makes that motion?
Someone.
Discussion? DMC does all our tax maps, all our, well, they do all our survey for capital projects, but anything they're paid there comes out of capital. But we did a cut, we did a resolution at Reorg, that's why it's a January 1.4. I think it was like $6,000, and we exceeded that, which we're permitted to, we just have to have resolution for the auditors to do so. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Yasi?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Delirpa?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, now really, the last item, non-agenda item for 2019, need a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Westcott from Recreation and Ken Fioretti from the Planning Board, effective 12/31. Thank you for their service. Who makes that motion?
Somebody.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Need a motion for late public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? Your name and address, please. Motion to close late public comment?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?